Calling meeting to order. Roll call, please. Trustee Crane?
Here.
Trustee Wigan?
Here.
Trustier Soylu?
Here.
Trustee Barto?
Here.
Trustee Murphy?
Here.
Trustee Pearson?
Here.
Trustee Anderson?
Here.
Dr. Smith?
Here.
All right. Thank you. Adoption of the agenda. Do I have a motion to adopt?
So moved.
Second. All right. Moved by Trustee Pearson, seconded by, was it, Ersoylu?
Yes.
All right. Roll call, please. Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustier Soylu?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
All right. Motion passes. We do not have community input for closed session, so we will now move to closed session. The items are student grade challenge, 3A. 3B will be conference with legal counsel, workers' compensation. C, public employee discipline dismissal, release, employment, number 202404HR. D, public employee discipline dismissal, release, employment. E, conference with labor negotiator. And we will return to open session at 6:00 PM. Calling meeting to order. In closed session, we had two decisions. The report out with regard to the student grade challenge, the board voted seven to zero to uphold and deny the student's grade challenge appeal. And it was unanimous. In regards to item 4C, in closed session, the Board of Education took action to approve the employment agreement, number 2024HR. So, sorry, 202404HR. The roll call vote was also unanimous, seven to zero. And now we move on to a moment of reflection and a pledge of allegiance led by our student board member, India Howerton. Please stand.
Place your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where which stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We will now move for adoption of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve for the, to adopt the minutes of 9:17:24? So moved. Second. Okay, Trustee Wigan made the motion, and the second was Trustier Soylu. Roll call vote, please. Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustier Soylu?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. It's unanimous. And we move on to recognition. And at this moment, I would like to turn the microphone over to Ms. Torres, or, oh, Dr. Sir. All right.
Yeah, so we're excited to recognize our Girl Scouts, a group 2383, and we have Mr. with us tonight, Mr. Del Real, who is the Administrative Assistant of Ed Services at the elementary education level.
Thank you, Dr. Sir. Good evening, President Crane, members of the board, Superintendent Smith, cabinet, and guests. This evening, we have a very fun recognition. It involves Girl Scout cookie sales and an exciting way to get new books. So now that I have your attention, I'd like to turn it over to our wonderful principal of Newport Elementary School, Principal Estrada.
Thank you. Good evening, board. Thank you so much for recognizing this wonderful group of students. These young ladies are prime examples of what can happen when you set a goal and work hard and persist and do it all in the service of your community. They came to me with an idea a couple years ago that would benefit our whole school and promote reading and promote positive behavior. So of course, I said yes. And they went to work. They marketed themselves and strategized and sold, sold, sold. 7,754 boxes of cookies. And I can only account for like maybe four boxes of Fendmans. But they worked super hard and it all came together and the community really got behind them because they were able to say what they were doing with all these cookie sales. And with that in mind, they made it happen. And we now have a wonderful book vending machine that sits right in our front lobby where everybody can see it. It is very inspiring to our students and they know that if they earn those best on the beach tickets for having great behavior, they can turn those in and redeem them for a book, for the book vending machine. And we are just so proud of these young ladies. They're supported by many of their parents who are here tonight and their troop leader, Jen Swisher. So I would like Jen to come up and bring up the girls.
Good evening. Girl Scouts aims to be girl-led, and the girls of Troop 2383 took it to another level. When we started selling cookies our first year, the girls were given the option of raising money for a fun activity, think like Build a Bear or going to Disneyland, or to raise money for a good cause. The girls unanimously decided to go the philanthropic route and chose their school as the recipient. The idea of a book vending machine was let go by the PTA initially, and then it was rejected just because of a lot of logistical reasons. Despite this, it came as one of the several ideas the girls could give back in addition to ideas like a mural, a buddy bench, or reusable bottles. They all set their hearts on the vending machine due to their love for reading. Several of our girls are on the Newport Mesa Battle of the Books competitive team. And the novelty of it fell short with a 5K goal the first year because we only sold $1,000. After attempting to get to buy-in from a sister troop and school organizations and other ideas, the girls chose to save that $1,000 and try again the following year. Our 22 girls strategized, made posters explaining why they raised funds, and constructed a gold thermometer. And they sold over, sold over 7,000 boxes of cookies and donated 120 to our Operation Cookie Drop for the military. After meeting their goal of $5,000, they approached Principal Estrada, who was impressed with their persistence, tenacity, and amount raised, and she enthusiastically supported the idea two years after it was born. The girls' love for literacy and shared determination taught them lessons like delayed gratification, selflessness, to not accept no as an answer, and when you're passionate, to never give up. And they can do hard things. They will get to walk by that vending machine for years to come and think, yeah, we did that.
All right. Thank you. So now we move on to student board member reports with Trustee Wigan.
All right. The topic tonight is how do you plan to collaborate with peers on campus to ensure that the overall student voice is captured in your monthly reports? And please share two campus highlights. We're going to start with Gannon Overfelt from Corona del Mar High School.
Good evening, Dr. Smith, President Crane, Vice President Wigan, other board members, and NMUSD staff and community members in attendance tonight. My name is Gannon Overfelt, and I'm the ASB president from Corona del Mar. Thank you for allowing me to speak on behalf of my school tonight. At CDM, we have a program called Student Voices, which ensures that our students' perspectives are heard and valued. During these meetings, we explore various topics impacting our school community, allowing students to share their thoughts and feelings. Recently, we've tackled issues like the pressures of college, you can ask me about that one, study habits, mental health, and substance use. Students leave their third-period classes for about 20 to 30 minutes to engage in these discussions, and when they return, they share insights with their classmates, fostering a culture of openness and support. This week, our middle school will discuss adjusting to campus life, while our ninth and 10th graders will discuss on, or will focus on academic planning. The 11th and 12th graders will explore managing academic and peer competition. We look forward to hearing the different perspectives our students will bring to these discussions. Another way our, our school ensures that the student voice is heard is through social media. We have an Instagram student recognition activities such as Students of the Month, Athletes of the Season, posts about upcoming events, and some insane sports edits made by individuals in our ASB. For example, we just had a mic'd up for our girls' flag football team. We also conduct Instagram takeovers where students share their daily experiences, helping to create an inclusive atmosphere at CDM. Another way we connect with students through social media is through anonymous questionnaires. These allow students to ask questions they may have about our school, and we make sure to respond, reinforcing our commitment to transparency and community engagement. Last week, we celebrated the State of the Schools Breakfast, an annual event that unites NMUSD staff, community members, and students to promote community, culture, and support for our district. ASB students from all high schools helped set up and run the event, while our pep squad, color guard, and drumline welcomed guests. Performances by orchestists, jazz band, and madrigals added to the festive atmosphere, showcasing the diverse talents within NMUSD. The State of the School Breakfast highlighted the achievements and diversity of NMUSD and underlined that all students can pursue their passions in our district. Another highlight on campus this last week was our Battle of the Beth. I was so proud of our school spirit. I felt like I was in an Alabama student section in the SEC Championship. Even though we lost, I went home with a smile on my face because I was so happy with the way our students presented themselves at the game. We also had our homecoming dance this last weekend, and it was an incredible experience. The atmosphere was filled with excitement, joy, making it a memorable night for everyone involved. From the insanely loud music to the amazing decorations, it truly captured the theme and spirit of our school. Overall, I'm overwhelmed with our school spirit these last couple weeks, and I look forward to the amazing year with CDM. Thank you.
Thank you. That was a great, heartwarming portrayal of what it's like to be a high school student the last two days, two weeks. Okay. Next, we have Audrey Nguyen Hu from Early College.
Hello and good evening, Superintendent Smith, President Crane, Vice President Wigan, and other esteemed board members. My name is Audrey Nguyen Hu, and I am proud and honored to represent Early College High School for this school year. For those that don't know, Early College High School, or ECHS, boasts a proud student population of just under 200. Our small size creates a close-knit community where every voice truly matters. As a student, I've had the privilege of building personal relationships with students from every grade level, and I have the unique opportunity to get to know just about everyone on campus, from students to staff. Furthermore, having been a member of my school's Associated Student Body, or ASB, for the past three years, I have significant experience in ensuring that all student voices are heard. To capture the diverse perspectives of my peers in my monthly reports, I plan to do what I've always done to represent the student body. Foster communication with students at every grade level to hear their input regarding school matters. I will actively seek student perspectives, whether through casual conversations during lunch or structured feedback sessions. I will also leverage my connections and position in ASB to gather insight into how students are feeling about the school. By maintaining this connection with my peers, I can ensure that my reports accurately reflect the overall student voice. This not only allows me to address concerns, but also highlight the many strengths of our campus. For instance, last Friday, we hosted our first-ever Howdy Ho-Down Sunset Showdown, a unique Western-themed blacklight dance. And if you're wondering what a dance like this would look like, we decorated over 200 feet of paper in glow-in-the-dark paint, created 3D decorations out of cardboard, and created a dance area within our school's quad, all very country-themed, of course. Attendance for this event actually surpassed that of our previous fall dances, which is especially impressive given our small school size this year. We enjoyed pizza, snacks, and fantastic music courtesy of our favorite DJ Kaboom, dancing the night away. Another fun event we had was our first bingo night of the school year at the end of September, which was hosted by my school's PTSA. This year, we had the highest attendance compared to the last three years. We played 10 intense rounds using daubers or the bingo markers as everyone competed to shout bingo first. Although I didn't win anything, it was still fun to see teachers, friends, family, and community members come together for such an amazing evening. These two events, I think, are a great way to start the fantastic school year. Thank you.
Thank you, Audrey. Now, on the dais, we have India Howerton from Costa Mesa High School.
Hello and good evening, trustees, Superintendent Smith, community members, and my fellow students. My name's India Howerton, and I'm the student board member for Costa Mesa High School. There are a few different ways that I try to collaborate with peers in order to accurately represent our student body. As a member of our Associated Student Body, I'm aware of many of the events and issues going on at our school. ASB recently introduced new anonymous, a new anonymous online forum for people to give suggestions to our ASB and faculty. Because of the anonymity, we're getting a lot of honest feedback from the student body. Another way that I try to ensure that I capture the overall student body is by holding forums with the club, Student Action Council, which is a club geared at giving students more of a voice in their community. I ask them what topics they'd like me to bring up to the board, and I also try to encourage students to speak at the meetings themselves so that the board can hear more student voices. As for our campus highlights, there have been a lot of different things going on at our school. From dance shows to drama showcases to fall sports, it's hard to pick just two campus highlights. One thing that I definitely want to bring up is our new girls' flag football team. This is our first year with an official team at our school, and it's been great to see all the support the team is getting. They've had a good amount of wins, and the school is happy to see their success. Another highlight has been our recent homecoming week. Homecoming is a highlight at our school every year, and this year was no exception. We kicked the week off with a dress-up theme with every day, quote, relating to our homecoming theme, which is A Night by the Bayou. We then hosted a movie night on Wednesday to play The Princess at the Frog. At our rally, we had performances from all of our grades, as well as the dance team, color guard, and jazz band. The excitement continued with our football game, where students reunited with Mesa alum, and we recognized the homecoming court. As always, everyone was looking forward to Saturday's dance. Our blacktop was transformed with a dance floor, photo booths, a taco stand, and an ice cream truck. The dance was a great way to boost students' morals and bring our student body together. As the first quarter of the school year draws to a close, I'm proud to see everything that CMHS students have been able to achieve, and I'm excited for what's to come.
Thank you, India. That was great.
Thank you.
I have a question. I was just noticing in the minutes, since we have a new school year, the minutes that we just approved don't have the question that was asked to the student board members. I think it could be good to include that in the minutes.
All right.
Just a note for.
Sam, did you hear that? Okay. Thank you. All right. We now move on to CSCA president's comments with the CSCA president, Amy Ching. Good evening.
Hi, everybody. Good evening, President Crane, trustees, Dr. Smith, cabinet, and guests. I just wanted to take a brief moment to talk about State of the Schools. I scribbled, so sorry for that. But it was my first time being at State of Schools, and it was just really a great experience, bringing everybody together, working together to highlight our community, which supports students from every level, from classified, certificated administrators, you know, we had a senator there. I mean, wow, that was pretty impressive for me. And I just, I really appreciate, appreciate personally the experience. I do regret not taking a picture with the senator because I wanted to share that with my parents. But anyways, overall, it was a great experience, so. But tonight, I wanted to highlight our paraeducators. Paraeducators work hand-in-hand with teachers. They directly impact students in the classrooms. Every year, CSCA holds its annual paraeducator conference in March during our elementary school conference week. This year, CSCA will plans to host 1,300 paraeducators. Last year, Newport Mesa sent four paraeducators to the conference. You may remember Edna Bentley, a behavior interventionist from Kaiser, came to the April meeting and shared her experiences. She talked about the benefits of the training and how the professional development would help her support students. She also noted that other districts sent more paraeducators to the conference than Newport Mesa. This was a little discouraging for her and for us. We know that staffing can sometimes be challenging, but as with certificated, professional development ensures that Newport Mesa has the highest-quality paraeducators for students. We hope that the board will continue to support positive student outcomes by increasing the attendance for paraeducators at this valuable training. We look forward to continuing to do the good work for students, staff, and the community. Thank you.
Thank you. And now for NMFT's president, Rhonda Reed.
Good evening, President Crane, trustees, Dr. Smith, cabinet, and guests here tonight. I also want to make a comment about State of the Schools last week, that it was so lovely to see so many community partners in one room from so many different levels of professions and all in one room to support our educators and our students. It was especially nice because the whole event was a fundraiser for teachers, for their teacher grants, so that they can have some extra dollars to provide some more enrichment in their classrooms. And it was especially nice to just pause and shut out the noise and celebrate all that's right, all that's good, in our schools, in our classroom. And I want to say I appreciate that this is a board that also shuts out the noise, and you make decisions solely based on what's right for students and what's right for educators. November 1st, we are going to be celebrating also our Teacher of the Year that went on to the county at Disneyland Hotel, of course. So we will be celebrating Jen Yenney from CDM, who went on as to the county and is a finalist, and then also Kristen Pirriton from Woodland. And we thank the trustees, I know Dr. Smith will be there, who will join us in celebrating these amazing teachers and all their accomplishments. Thank you.
Thank you. We now move on to item 14, which is community input on non-agendized items. Trustier Soylu?
This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items on the closed-session agenda only. Comments on closed session? Nope. Is this the wrong one?
14.
14.
Non-agendized.
The next one. Sorry, they all begin the same. This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items not on the regular meeting agenda. Comments on non-agenda topics are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic, as speaker may not relinquish his or time to another person by order of the Brown Act, section 54954.2. The board will take no action or have any discussion on non-agendized items. The superintendent may provide clarification during superintendent comments.
That was, that was a fast one. All right. Thank you. And then, please, audience, if you're new to the board meetings, per the Brown Act, trustees cannot interact with the audience, but we certainly listen to your comments, just so you know. And there's a blue sheet that goes over the board protocols that explain that, and also just the overall expectation of behavior in the boardrooms. So thank you. We will begin with Rachel Minneke and Eddie Garcia. You'll come up, we have three minutes, followed by Allison Rubino.
Do you each have, you have three minutes together or are you speaking separately?
Together.
Okay.
Sorry. So, good evening. My name is Eddie Garcia. I'm the general manager for Think Together that oversees the Orange County region, and we also supervise one of your wonderful programs at Pollerino Elementary School. And I'll let my colleague introduce herself.
Yes, hi, I'm Rachel Minneke. I am the program manager over at the Shalimar Learning and Teen Center.
And first, I'd like to thank Superintendent Smith, because the last time I was here, he acknowledged Shalimar Learning Center, which is really, really nice, and that's actually what we are here to talk about today. We're both here to share a little history about Shalimar, the status, and then the future of Shalimar. When Think Together started, the Shalimar Learning Center over 30 years ago, it was from a place of immediate need for children in that community to have a safe and supervised space after school, away from the violence that plagued that community. Fast forward to today, we are, we are in a time where state funding has greatly increased access to expanded learning programs on school campuses. This means that students in the Shalimar community now have more options available at their own school, and there's no longer a demand for these neighborhood-based programming. As such, our organization has made the difficult decision to close the doors of Shalimar Learning Center and Teen Center at the end of December.
Shalimar has been a symbol of our mission and the origin of our Think Together story. What started as one small community has grown into Think Together of today, where we are changing the odds for over 200,000 students across 400 schools from the Bay Area to Coachella Valley. Shalimar has provided services to thousands and stu, thousands of students over the years, with the majority of those students going on to college and career, and they have become professionals in various fields that include medical, legal, education, and architecture, just to name a few. In the last year, we also made an impact on the community, as we had 11 parents graduate from our literacy course. In addition, on average, our students increased their reading proficiency by one grade level after participating in our reading workshops. We have currently 60 students in the program, and we are grateful for the support of Newport Mesa Unified School District has given, such as ensuring that there will be openings for the students in school-based expanded learning programs starting in January.
And I want to thank Director Flores and her team for helping us facilitate that. We just want to make sure that all of our Newport Mesa students transition well into the schools and participate in, actively participate in the wonderful programs that we already have on campus. So thank you all for that. And Shalimar is a success story, and it will always be part of the Think Together journey. We have been deeply honored to be part of this community and look forward to continuous, continuing to collaborate with Newport Mesa now and in the future. Thank you all.
Thank you. Allison Rubino?
Good evening. Good evening, Dr. Wesley Smith, President Crane, esteemed board and guests. My name is Allison Rubino. I'm a mother of two boys at East Fluff. I have a TKer and a third grader. I'm also PTA member, a classroom volunteer, a gala committee member for the past three years, and a small business owner. So as a parent and a community member, I just wanted to thank the district and your strong leadership with our recent campus upgrades at East Fluff, most notably our awesome new TK playground, which they are absolutely loving and thrilled to have, our new four portables that were added over the summer. It's just been a really refreshing change as a volunteer to come in and see Mrs. Wendlin for art and Mrs. Duffin for music, having their own space for all their supplies, all their equipment. And Miss Duffin even told me last week that she was nesting, which I just thought was so sweet for all of her instruments. Also, our new fire alarm system, our locked and secured front entrance, very important, the AI-enhanced cameras that will be installed on all Newport Mesa campuses, the new no-cellphone policy for TK through eighth grade. I know this one will really come in handy when my kids get older. In addition, the East Fluff NPR upgrades are beautiful, and it will be great for our upcoming Peter Pan play. And then last but not least, our new roof for the entire campus. So just thank you so much, so much gratitude. I also wanted to mention how thrilled we are as parents and staff to have our new principal, Mrs. Ebby. We really appreciate her leadership, her clear communication, parent involvement, and collaboration amongst the staff and parents. Our kids are loving her presence. She's a lot of fun, as I witnessed last week with the chalk, the chalk party, which my TKer was a part of, and she was just such a great sport. So everyone's, it's just a really great change. So just on behalf of many of the East Fluff parents who love being involved. who love being involved in our incredible school, we're really appreciative of the district's strong leadership, support, and recent accomplishments. And while I know there has been some challenges over the last year, I do feel as a parent very confident that we're well-positioned to have a strong academic 24 through 25 school year. So thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Anderson, do you have your light on? I just want you to remember that we cannot take action nor having a discussion on.
Yes, my, my comment is for superintendent. Related to Think Together, I just was wondering if we are specifically connecting around the teen programs. I know the younger students are going to our EOLP program after school, but it sounded like there are about 25 students that were still attending for secondary. And so I just wanted to make sure that we have services and they are connected directly and the parents are informed.
All right.
And then I also had a question for us just about conversations with, I can talk to the superintendent, I'm not making a comment just public, about the apartments that are currently being used for Think Together. There's three apartments that are being used. And so just making sure, I know the city has had some conversations about possibly renting some of the others for city use. And so I just want to make sure that we have those conversations before people move in and there's not an opportunity to use them as classrooms anymore. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, where this is, there are about eight members of the public that will be speaking from the CDM Vocal Music Program. And so I'm going to, what I'm going to do is I'm going to call by name and then give you two, well, you'll see. So first up is Gary D'Agostino, second Gabriela D'Agostino, and then after that Karen Odell Barber.
We actually organized ourselves.
Oh, all right, what, okay.
All of us did organize ourselves to maximize our time, if you don't mind, that we go a little in the order that we planned.
Well, I'll tell you what. I will go to the next topic. Meanwhile, you'll put these in order.
I would be happy to, thank you.
Okay, so we'll move on to the next topic. And this one will be two, two and a half minutes, because we have more than the 20, we have typically three minutes for, it's 20 minutes and three minutes each, but we have more speakers. So in order to have all the speakers speak, we cut down the time per speaker. And we have Yola Takamori, Shawnee Chisholm, and third, Lenai Smith in that order, and then there are four more. All right? So, is it, did I say your name correctly?
Yeah, Yoda.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, good evening, members of the board, faculty, and community. My name is Yoda Takamori and as a parent, student, as a parent of a student athlete, I stand before you to discuss a critical issue that impacts our student-athlete safety, the need to replace worn-down and hazardous grass fields with high-quality turf at Newport Harbor. Our athletes dedicate countless hours to practice and competition. They push their limits striving for excellence, often on fields that unfortunately do not meet safety standards required for optimal performance and pose a safety hazard to athletes. This is a matter of player's safety and well-being. Grass fields, while natural and aesthetically pleasing, can be uneven, muddy, and worn down, creating dangerous playing conditions that increase the risk of injury and require constant upkeep. Turf, on the other hand, offers a consistent, consistently safe surface with minimal maintenance and upkeep costs. Turf provides better traction and stability, reducing the likelihood of slips, falls, and related injuries. Turf fields are more durable and can withstand the rigors of frequent use. They can be played on in various weather conditions without the risk of creating unsafe playing conditions. This means more practice time and fewer cancellations, allowing our athletes to train and compete at their best. Additionally, turf fields promote inclusivity. With constant, with consistent playing conditions, we can accommodate not only our varsity teams, but also junior varsity, freshmen, and community leagues. This shared resource fosters a greater sense of community and encourages participation in sports for all students. I urge the board to consider the long-term benefits of their short-term investment. By prioritizing the safety of our student-athletes, we are sending a powerful message that their health and well-being are paramount while mitigating risk and cost to the district. It is time to take a proactive step towards ensuring that our athletes can compete in an environment that supports their growth, performance, and safety. Thank you for the consideration.
Thank you. Shawnee, Lenai, and then?
Hi. Good evening to all the board members. My name is Shawnee Chisholm and I have a freshman at Newport Harbor that plays football and a sixth grader hoping to follow in his footsteps in a few years. I am here to support all of the coaches and parents of all the kids that play sports at Harbor and want to see that these kids have the safest possible environment to practice and play. I trust that the coaches know better than I how to keep their players safe. And from my understanding, the grass field is a hazard and turf is being requested. We spend a lot of time keeping kids safe at school and I believe this should include fields that are not uneven and that pose a risk. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next is Lenai, and then after is, and I apologize for the pronunciation, but Kisinich Babz? Okay, and then after is Matt Healy? But there are two names, Barbara Stone, are you? So who's, is it Matt or Barbara that is speaking? Are you coming up together, but one is speaking? Got it. Okay, thank you.
Hi, good evening, everyone, Dr. Smith and trustees. My name is Lenai Smith and I'm a parent of two Newport Harbor football players. I'm also involved in the PTA at several schools in the district. And I wanted to speak out as well against the safety concerns of the practice field at Newport Harbor. I am also in favor of putting turf in for the practice field to make it safer for our students. Last year, my junior slipped on the practice field during practice and hyperextended his leg. He was out for a couple of weeks and required physical therapy. Thankfully, thankfully, it wasn't more serious. The field doesn't drain water, so what happens is it results in like mud and uneven surfaces. And so I hope you'll consider this and I appreciate your support for all of our students, staff, and faculties. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Barbara Kesnick. I am a resident of Newport Beach and we also have three students at Harbor, two of which play football. One of those is a defensive tackle, extremely active and full throttle. He's on the practice field all the time. Anytime he's on the practice field, he generally comes home in more pieces than when they're on the turf. It makes an absolute difference and these boys are out there six days a week. So they're there more than at home sometimes. It would be amazing for them to not come home as broken as they do. But also Harbor has a ton of athletes in other sports as well. So all year round, it's not just football. This will create all of the kids a better field and a better opportunity to not have canceled-out games in winter time. And we don't have to pay the staff to get everything set up before the games. Lots of cost-effectiveness, which I know you all know. But it would be wonderful if you guys can vote in favor of this. They've worked very hard and so have the coaches. And everybody is always there, so it would be extra wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you. Matt and Barbara, and after that is Gary D'Agostino and Kerry? Kerry Rocos?
Yes. Hello, Matt Healy. We're new to this, never been to boarding before. Barbara Stone, we're both parents for children at CDM High School. Our ears must have been ringing because we're also here regarding baseball and fields. We both have children that play, student athletes that play at CDM. We, and we're here specifically actually because of the email that we received from the district on the second regarding enhanced athletic facilities and equipment. In reading through that email, we were both scratching our heads as to whether or not that pertained to CDM because I've formerly been on the board as treasurer and I know we spend about 30% of our budget on field maintenance. There's some issues with watering. We're not even here asking for a full turf field, although that would be lovely. So I guess the question a lot of the parents are asking us as former board members and existing parents of older players is, you know, what does this mean? Does this apply to us? Are we not asking for things the right way? Is the coach not asking for things the right way? How do we reach out? And, you know, do we need to start reaching out to the district and find out how we get some of these things done? Because the kids themselves are, you know, not only is it a safety issue, but they're actually doing weeding and mowing and watering of the fields themselves. So they're actually not even practicing as much as they should be. And we've actually lost players as a result of this too. So again, I guess the comment is, it seems like there's a lot of stuff that the district is willing to do. Doesn't seem that's being done for, for our fields. And I guess we're just trying to figure out how we get that done. And bottom line is probably parents are going to be, you know, reaching out and they're asking us, so.
Your question, the parent asked and where the funds are going to.
Yeah, I mean, it should be going towards coaches and safety in the fields.
And field maintenance.
Yeah. Thank you guys for your time.
Thank you. Gary D'Agostino? And then Kerry Rocos?
Good evening, members of the school board, superintendent Dr. Smith, and other members of the community. My name is Gary D'Agostino, a proud parent of twins that attend Corona Del Mar Middle School and High School. A couple of weeks ago, I also read the flyer regarding the maintenance of grass fields and the playing surfaces in Newport Unified School District. And I do agree with the parents of Newport Harbor that turf fields would reduce injuries and provide safety advantages. But I'm more aligned with the Corona Del Mar where we would just want to stop cutting our own grass and start making our fields safe for what we have right now this coming season. I'm wondering about when more detailed information will be released about the flyer? Because a lot of, as I mentioned, a lot of the field maintenance and preparation is prepared and funded by the baseball boosters, including the softball, the softball fields, that those funds are coming out of the baseball budget. And when I'm, one of my tasks, because we're building a softball booster program for girls, and one of our tasks is to raise money. And when I found out I had to raise money for field conditioning, it was rather shocking. Mountain clay, turf fist, other conditioner products. And we're all about wanting to raise money for hiring coaches, additional equipment, and things of that nature. But we do believe, especially with that messaging that came out, that, that we would like to know more how your hired subcontractor will service our fields and how we can complement their efforts and hopefully reallocate our own funds towards things that result in better coaching and to elevate our own programs to compete in the league that we do compete. Thank you.
Thank you. Kerry Rocos?
Thank you NMUSD Board for your service. I'm also here to talk about fields at CDM. Go Sea Kings. Sink the sailors. My name is Kerry Rocos. I'm the mother of eight children, two stepchildren, and five children that are currently in the district, and one that used to sit right here with you, TJ Rocos, my stepson and the former ASB president. Which brings me to why I'm here. My daughter Alexa Rocos is a senior at CDM High School and she's the quarterback on the women's varsity flag football team. The women's flag football team, home game field, daily practice field is really in horrible, unsafe condition. It's currently only mowed once a week on Tuesdays, but sometimes they don't come. It's mowed like a general field of grass. There's no sports surface. There's like large chunks and clippings. If you try and walk, you can literally fall just walking. There's no weed killing, there's no seeding. And this results in large unsafe patches of grass in the playing areas. This is particularly alarming to me as a mom with my stepdaughter and her teammates playing every day. I also have three younger daughters who are going to be playing flag. One's already at CDM. So I'm here today to ask for safety, equality, and opportunity for our daughters. This town can and must do better. The CDM Girls Flag Football Team has made the field their home. It's painstaking amount of time, love, and effort. They are the number 11 team in the nation. Go Sea Queens. They would, regardless of the ranking, we're also one of CDM's only top 20 in the nation's sports. Have to put that out there. But regardless, we hold camps, district youth clinics, tournaments, large fundraisers, alumni games on this field. So please consider a plan to fully restore and grow the field. Again, not asking for turf, just like standard maintenance and safety, the same safety that's given to other, other fields on campus. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, now we have the CDM Vocal Program in order that you gave me. Tracy LaRoca, Jason Barber, CDM student read by a parent. No, I guess that's, that's how it's going, yep. And then Renata Sefton Sen, and then I will read the others after. You have two minutes.
Good evening, members of the school board, Superintendent Smith, President Crane, and members of our community, and thank you for the accommodation in our order. My name is Tracy LaRoca and I'm the mother of Ashley LaRoca, a senior at Corona Del Mar High School and a sixth-year student of Andy Ball and the Vocal Program of CDM. I'm here joined by many others in the community and the choral program in support of reinstating Mr. Ball as the choir director of the program. What you will hear tonight, following my remarks, are stories of the tremendous impact Mr. Ball has made on the choir program and more importantly, on the well-being and development of his students. He understands that being an educator is more than just teaching. It's about mentoring, guiding, and nurturing our kids, something he has done with extraordinary success. Under Mr. Ball's leadership, our choir program has become one of the most vibrant in the state, providing students with opportunities far beyond the classroom. The program includes numerous off-site competitions, retreats, and even an international music tour, all of which offer unique experiences that help students grow both as musicians and as individuals. However, we also recognize that organizing and managing these large, complex events requires significant coordination time and effort, often more than any one individual can manage, even someone as dedicated as Mr. Ball. We understand that part of the challenge here may stem from this very issue. In light of this, we believe he is being held accountable for the lack of support that we, as a community of parents and faculty, have failed to deliver for such an exceptional and complex program. It's time for us to take responsibility and ensure that the choir program has the backing it needs to flourish without unfairly placing the weight of it all on one person. Before I close, I want to be clear, Mr. Ball does not present any danger to our students and we desperately miss him.
Thank you. Jason?
Good evening. You may be looking at me and thinking, hey, is that the kid from State of the Schools? And you would be correct. My name is Jason Barber. I'm a sixth-year student of Mr. Ball's and tonight I'm here to attest to the impeccable man of character that Mr. Ball is. I've been in this choir program for six years and I can speak on behalf of all the guys in the program. He's the greatest male role model I've ever had in my entire life. He does everything right. He, he does the right thing even when no one's watching. He's, he holds himself accountable. And I, I'll tell you, when we were touring Spain and when we were touring Canada and when we were touring South Africa, you get one complaint a day. He makes us all be inspired, positive people that hold each other accountable. And, and you can tell him, hey, hey, you can't have more than one complaint a day. And he'll, he'll hold himself to the same standard that he holds everyone else. Mr. Ball does the right thing every day. He works so hard. He's the most hard-working teacher I've ever seen at CDM. During the Christmas season, we put on a choreographed full play filled with characters and songs and dance. And I tell you, he puts it all on himself and he sleeps maybe four hours a night. And he comes in, in the morning, and you won't hear a single complaint about it. Why? Because he loves this program. He loves the students and he loves his school. And I'll tell you, he's one of the, he's probably the best teacher at CDM. He's the most caring, beloved, outstanding individual at CDM. And if I didn't personally believe that with every fiber in my body, I don't think I would have driven here at 6 o'clock on a Tuesday night to come speak for him. So on behalf of all the guys in this program and every kid in this program, I urge you to bring back Ball. Thank you.
This one says, CDM student read by a parent. Okay, I guess CDM student read by a CDM student. We've never had this title before, so.
Yeah, so hello, I'm reading for a.
Yeah, so hello, I'm reading for a student who submitted this that wanted to stay anonymous. So.
No, that's not our protocol. Our protocol, sorry. I'm sorry. Our protocol is that the person needs to be here. They can email us. We can't have people reading for other people. I'm sorry, point of order. If someone wants to send us an anonymous email, they can. It's part of our protocol, though, that a person needs to come and speak. A student needs to come and speak for themselves. The parent needs to.
Well, it also resonates with me, so I can also speak for myself.
You can read it in your own words, but it's that. We're not reading someone else's. That's a slippery slope.
Just say your name.
Great. My name is Gabriel Neves. And I'd like to speak for myself as well. So no program has taught me leadership as Mr. Ball. I'm also one of the many students in Music Council. And I've been doing choir since my freshman year. And I've been able to develop my leadership skills due to Mr. Ball's as a sense of like being. And so I'm one of the many leaders for concert development. And Mr. Ball does an incredible job at giving us guidance while also letting us be free to have creative direction and develop things as standalone leaders. And I've been able to organize many events and also attract thousands of people to choir and music and be able to raise many dozens of dollars for CDM. And it's incredibly rare to have such an input in such a big program and feel successfully heard and see our impact every day. And I look up to Mr. Ball as a mentor. And as many things, he's given such an impact in all of our lives. For alumni, for middle schoolers, for freshmen, sophomores, juniors like me and seniors who are about to graduate. A lot of people can say that they dedicate themselves to music, not just because of the music that they sing, but because Mr. Ball was the one who taught them. And so what I've learned from him is that, you know, you really need a certain type of person to attract this type of commitment and to be able to do the things that we do. And I don't think that anybody else in the world would be able to do the type of things that Mr. Ball has been able to do for us. So I just wanted to tell you guys to bring back Ball. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll have Renata and then To- Trace Gabriela D'Agostino.
Hello, everyone. My name is Renata, and thank you so much for hearing us. I want to take a moment to express what Mr. Ball in the choir program. I'm sorry, I'm very emotional about this. He touched everyone's life here. And I've been to many, many of these trips. And let me tell you something, I'm not going to read anything. I'm telling you from my heart, I've seen how he treats every kid here. He teaches them how to behave well, how to treat each other with respect. I could never think he could put one of these kids in danger, ever, or in harm's hands. He would always protect them. My daughter came here, she didn't know English. She didn't feel she belonged. When she met Mr. Ball and got to choir program, she felt finally part of this community, part of this program. She felt heard. She felt seen. And me too. And that's why I dedicate my time to support him, because I know the man he is. You cannot leave him one day apart from these kids anymore. We need support. But more than that, we need Mr. Ball back. Nobody's like Mr. Ball. You cannot find someone like Mr. Ball. Certain people are so special. You don't have two Charlie Chaplains. Mr. Ball is Charlie Chaplin, okay? He makes us laugh even in hard days. So please, don't make them suffer one more day.
Thank you. So Gabriela, and then I guess Gabriela D'Agostino and then Gary D'Agostino.
Dr. Wesley Smith, distinguished sport members and fellow guests. My name is To- Trace. I'm a mom of two boys in choir. One is Ryan, a magical singer who attended the South Africa field trip last summer, who's been in choir for four years, and a younger brother who's been in choir for two years. I had the opportunity to come to the South Africa trip as a parent chaperone. And let me tell you, I witnessed firsthand who Mr. Ball really is and the role model he is to the students. He's always professional, who expect high standards from his students. From delivery, the best work, punctuality, and most of all, respect to their peers and people from different cultures. He truly instills high values, work ethics, and most importantly, being a good human being. I see the utmost respect among the students to him and how they model his behavior and manners. When some student got sick, he made sure that they are well taken care of. He stayed up late to ensure they're okay. He asks a student to let him know anytime they need him. He goes about and beyond to ensure the well-being of the students. If only I can show you the joy and excitement of so many African kids from disadvantaged communities joining the CDM choir to sing and dance. This would not have happened without Mr. Ball's initiative. These are life-changing experience created at CDM, and you would never see or hear anywhere else. Here's some fun facts. 220 students in choir this year. More than 1,000 of students in choir the last 11 years. Magical singers have traveled to nine countries and completed and won many awards. And they are the first American choir group ever won the award.
I appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you.
Gabriela, Gary, and after Gary is Karen Odell Barber. I've seen you on stage many times. Gabriela, you're amazing.
Okay. Good evening, members of the school board, superintendent Dr. Smith, and members of our community. My name is Gabriela D'Agostino. I'm a freshman at Corona Del Mar High School. I've been enrolled in choir for three years and currently I'm in the vocal ensemble Rocks Angelica. When I first moved to Newport Beach at the start of seventh grade, I faced a lot of judgment because of my differences. So to say it was a difficult transition for me would be an understatement. A few months down the line, I met the kindest people and they were all enrolled in choir. I joined choir because of them, and that was the best decision I've made at this school. Mr. Ball has done an amazing job forming a community built around acceptance and kindness. Because of this, I weren't being seen as an outcast or being viewed as an equal and inspiration to my peers. I know all communities on campus strive to be inclusive, but of all the programs I've been exposed to, nothing compares to the level of inclusivity as the community Mr. Ball has developed. I'm in no position to decide whether or not Mr. Ball should return to the head of the vocal program. But as the board continues to investigate and deliberate whether he is to return, please understand that he is irreplaceable. Our vocal program will continue to suffer in his absence. Thank you for your time.
Gary.
Tough act to follow. Just got me teared up.
Well, you already met Gabriela. I'm also here to speak in support of Andrew Ball. The program he has fostered and nurtured is one that is truly admired by other programs. I'm in the process of building a booster program for CDM Girls Softball, which I mentioned previously, not very eloquently, but I did. When we had our initial meeting with Coach Dennis Wilbanks and Coach Louis Vasquez, we literally said that we could only dream of having a program as successful as Andrew Ball's vocal program. It's mostly about student commitment and buy-in that supports that program. My hope is that Mr. Ball doesn't bear all the responsibility for our collective failures as parents. Many times, he has requested help from parents for fundraisers, choral events, tours and retreats. And we believe we're supporting him, but we also feel sometimes, at least I'll speak for myself, that I made my donation and that was enough. And it only takes one incident to prove me wrong or to prove everybody wrong and for it all to come crashing to a crumble, I guess, I'm sorry. I believe that the parents of these young choral members have a plan to support him in any way necessary to ensure compliance to all district policies in the future. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Karen Odell Barber, Aiden and Liam. And then I have Liam and Aiden, so.
Is it okay if they go first?
Sure.
Sure.
That's fine.
They're three generations of choral students. All three of them have been students of Andy Ball. They are all brothers.
It's fine, but one of you has to speak and then the other.
Okay. That's okay, but come up with your brothers.
You can come up.
Come up with your brother.
Absolutely. Are you Liam or are you Aiden?
I'm Aiden. I'm Aiden Tate. Hello, school board. My name is Aiden Jagger Tate. I am actually an alumni of the CDM Vocal Music Program, but I was there for six years. And I'm here tonight because, let me start, let me start somewhere else. I joined the program in the seventh grade, not because of the fact that I just liked music, even though that was true. It was because my oldest brother, JR, who couldn't make it here tonight, came back from choir every single time, whether it be a concert or an event or whatever. He came back grinning from ear to ear, smiling, excited, talking about what he did. And when I remember in the sixth grade, when I graduated, I said, I want to go and do that. When I was a junior, this one right here, he got into the CDM Vocal Music Program as well. And the year before, we went to Spain. And I remember coming back from Spain. Obviously, I was dead tired, but the next day I told him all about it. And he said, I want to go and do that. I want to go and experience that. And that wasn't just because of the music, it wasn't just because of the trip. It was because of the environment Mr. Ball cultivated. That is what makes the CDM Vocal Music Program so important, not only to me as an alumni, I'm not even at the school anymore, but to everybody else here, is the fact that he's not only impacted my life, my brother's life and his life, but the fact that his absence has caused so much heartbreak. He has contemplated leaving. He's wanted to do this program for six years. He's contemplated leaving because he says, without him, what's the point? I know somebody else who also cannot be here tonight, but said that he stopped the one thing he loved doing the most because of choir and the environment Mr. Ball cultivated. So in the end, I can't speak on your behalf. I don't know what's going on and I can't make any demands. But the only thing I can thoroughly suggest is the immediate reinstation of Ball. Forgive me, I can't talk. Bring back Ball.
All right, lastly.
Thank you. My name is Karen Odell Barber. I am a resident of Newport Beach for the last 21 years. I'm also the mother of Jason Barber from Bring Back Ball. Jason Barber is not somebody who has a lot of time on his hands, and he's right. He came straight from football practice and he showered and came straight here. Mr. Ball is the only person at PAMA who would take an athlete and be his PAMA advisor. And Jason Barber hops from football to choir to drama, and he's included in all of those things. I would like you to stand, if you're here from Corona Del Mar High School, if you're a parent, alumni or current student, I would like you to stand. You two get an overphone. I would like you to see how many people came on a Tuesday to support Andrew Ball. If you've ever seen the movie Dead Poets Society, he's our captain. And when they stand on the desk and say, oh, Captain, my captain, these are the people saying that. These are the people whose mental health has been positively impacted by Andy Ball. I am a mental health professional. And I can tell you that the anxiety and the absolute, the tears every day and the missing Mr. Ball, the chaos that it's created for these students in terms of their mental health and their instability. He is an inclusive person, as you've heard. He brings people together of all cultures, of all abilities, of all sexual orientations. And he brings them together in, yes, to sing and perform music all over the world, but he brings them together as people who've become part of a community that's more valuable than what they're doing. It's more than about singing. If it were just about singing, all of these people would not be here tonight to say, oh, Captain, my captain, please bring back Mr. Andy Ball. There's only one.
Thank you. Thank you. And now we move on to superintendent comments.
Yeah, I want to once again thank our allies and friends from Think Together. And it's been mentioned, but we are working with them to make sure that our ELOP programs are open for students that want to and can benefit from the programs that we offer. They're also working with Christie Flores, who was also mentioned, on issues of transportation and other items. And we'll follow up with trustee questions about other programs and the use of the remaining facilities. But I think what Think Together started there in Shalimar's Inspirational, and kudos to all of them and for all of their efforts for all these years. And we'll do our best to continue serving the student populations with your support and help. East Bluff, really glad to recognize parents seeing everything that they've been doing over there. The staff's been working hard, I've mentioned it before, but seeing the playground almost completed is absolutely just a relief. We weren't sure that we could finish all those projects. The team worked around the clock to open the campus, that and four others. And now these new play facilities with shade structures built in are coming online and will be celebrated by trustees at ribbon cutting events over the next several weeks. So I'm really thankful the parents came and provided that feedback. With regard to the fields, I just would want to point out that our message was to reassure that safety standards are being followed, that when we look at American society for testing materials, that we exceed those expectations and we're regularly surveying, doing compaction studies of all of our fields. And so we determine through the efforts of lots of folks that they are safe. Dr. Bolton sent a message out saying the same at the beginning of the semester. That being said, there's improvements that can be made. We intend to, at all of the schools, improve those facilities. We have an on-the-go team, if you will, that just goes around and rotates and looks into the facility issues. But I think the other question was, so what do we do if we're not getting the support that we need? And I'm sorry to see some of the parents left, because what I would say is, even though we put protocols into place after we had the rabid incident of last year that identified that we need better communication protocols when the facilities aren't being addressed as quickly and thoroughly as they could be. It appears there are areas where we can improve in that regard. And what I would say is to work through the site principals and bring in Jeff Trader and his team. And that's what we've done to address these. And again, if we're unaware of fields that have to be addressed, that's the avenue. We want to keep those principals involved. Get Mr. Trader. You want to reach out, and some folks have, reach out to me. I'll share it with Mr. Trader, reach out to him, so that we can address these things. Because we don't want our students mowing fields, as was stated, or picking weeds and things like that. We want them to participate in co-curricular and extracurricular activities and benefit therein. And so that's our commitment. Work with the principal, get ahold of us, we'll go visit the fields. As it relates to the last group of speakers, I want to start with the first comment that was made. I think it's really important, the lack of support. And just share that that's certainly something that Dr. Haley has addressed in meetings with parents. And parents are very vocal about, honest with them about more support that's needed for the program. And not just in the way of staff, but also staff, looking at new staff that can be brought in to help in co-educator types of activities. And also flexing existing staff so that they can provide more support. And then program support along the way of making sure that any commitments made to the students, that those are honored moving throughout the school year, that they don't miss any opportunity. And we've heard some of them describe tonight that those happen as planned. And so Dr. Haley's really working hard with the team to bring in new staff, address with flexing other staff, honoring those commitments to provide support. And then I can't speak about personnel matters. I understand that's frustrating. I've been doing this a long time. And when people don't know what's going on, it creates all kinds of frustration. Totally understood. I just wanted to say that as a career educator, I just wanted to say that as a career educator, it was inspiring to see the students and parents have the courage to show up and to speak their truth and to share how important he is. Someday, I hope to retire. And it'd be amazing, I can't even tell you how powerful it'd be for even one student to say the things about me that were said about personnel. And so it's inspiring. Thank you for your courage. Know that it's frustrating, just know that we're committed to supporting the program and working through our work as thoroughly and expeditiously as we possibly can. And that's about all I can share on that.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. We will now move on to community input on agenda items. Do we have any? Okay. Trustee Ersoylo, could you please read the statement?
This is an opportunity for the public to address the board regarding items on the regular meeting agenda. Comments on agenda items are limited to three minutes per comment, up to 20 minutes per topic. A speaker may not relinquish his or time to another person. Speaker cards for items on the discussion action calendar may be held until that item is considered by the board, if the speaker prefers.
All right. And coming up to the podium is Dan Escheraldi.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, that's the way my grandmother would say my last name, so.
I'm not Italian for nothing.
So my name is Dan Scheraldi. I'm a parent at Anderson Elementary School. I have a second grader, a kindergartner and one more that'll be starting in a couple of years. I'm also the school foundation, a school's foundation board member and treasurer. I'm on on campus often and see an urgent need for improvements that are on the agenda this evening, both from a safety and learning standpoint at Anderson Elementary. On behalf of our school, I'd just like to express our support of this item and thank you for your time and consideration. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. We now move on to achievement, a report on current status and the vision forward. Relentless pursuit of academic excellence for all. And that would be Dr. Sir and Ms. Torres.
Yes, we're we're collaborating this evening, so you have both of us tonight.
We can pause for about 15 seconds.
We'll let the, we always clear a room, I'm telling you. Every time I come up here, kids leave. I'm not sure how I feel about that, Dr. Smith.
All right.
Okay, great. Well, good evening, President Crane, trustees and Dr. Smith and cabinet and community. Dr. Sir and I have for you this evening a presentation to discuss what is considered the current status and the vision forward for student achievement. You may realize that this past week, our state of California released our state testing data. And tonight, we have a very high level presentation for you, an overview to be able to share some of the wonderful data that we were able to achieve this past school year. So we love our colorful infographics and thank you to our assessment team for creating these for us. And in front of you, you have some high level data that kind of talks about our our testing program this year. We have over 8,600 students who were tested. And just to remind us, we test students in grades three through eight and grade 11. We had some successes this year that we'd like to share with you. And so in English Language Arts, we are fortunate that we had a overall growth. So the good news is, is our district overall is up. Our 11th grade students really shined and have an overall increase of over 5% for our 11th graders. And that's a great data set because 11th graders don't take a test in ninth and 10th and then they show up in 11th grade and we we give them a test. And so we're very impressed to see those numbers. Our students who are English only students grew overall by 0.85. And then you will see that our fifth graders and our sixth graders also had incremental increases. So we're thrilled to be able to share that. All our testing season was throughout March and June. And so we give our schools some flexibility in terms of when they choose to be able to assess. And then in mathematics, overall, the district had a slight increase. Math tends to be one of those challenging points in the state of California. And so we had a slight increase. Our English only students grew by 0.62%. And our sixth grade fixed cohort, meaning following sixth graders, the fourth, fifth and sixth, so they'd be the same students tested year to year, grew by almost 4%. And our fifth graders increasing to about 0.81. So overall, you'll see that we had progress in each of these areas.
Good evening. So we did have a few bright spots. We had Ray Elementary School with a 17% growth over three years. Lincoln Elementary School with a growth of 10%. Newport Heights with a growth of 7%. And Sonora with a growth of 7% over the course of three years. Just a couple of quick tidbits in regards to some of the things that are happening at those schools that are helping to get results. Ray has gone eight years with the Avid program and really focused on a rigorous and enriched educational experience. Lot of small group instruction and progress monitoring with assessments there. Lincoln, very focused on thinking maps in all content areas, working on those cognitively guided models in regards to putting your thinking together in every single content area. A lot of focus on that. And also they have a very heavy focus on the reading foundational skills. The work we're doing with Hegarty, the work we're doing with training our teachers is certainly helping to pay off there. In regards to Heights, they have a strong walk to learn program with small group instruction and intervention. And they really focused during this time on a model of intervention for students who need additional support after teaching has occurred, all the way up to acceleration with students who have met particular standards but need additional support to move that forward. And then with Sonora, we've got a strong fidelity to using core curriculum. They have a huge focus on continually assessing and reteaching. And the professional development model that we have at Sonora is outstanding. Mia Dodge, a principal at Sonora, is a hands-on educator and doing some really great work.
Very proud of Estancia High School. You'll see that they grew 8% over three years. And I had the pleasure of having our secondary principal team listen to Estancia High School English Department just a couple of weeks ago, sharing the highlights of the work that they're doing and the exceptional focus on teacher collaboration and alignment. And you'll see that they've been doing that for several years and they are definitely getting results. And so we are very grateful that they shared some of their secrets and the secret sauce. And we're looking to use those individuals as supports for other high schools to be able to look at that, at that type of data and use that PLT process.
All right, the next model we have is the growth over three years in mathematics. You'll see that, again, Ray has had a really nice growth model of 14%. Adams has grown 11% over the last couple of years and Newport Heights at 4%, Estancia at 11%. You'll hear a little bit about Ray and Newport Heights a few times tonight, but Lori Hogard's very strong in creating systems. She's very focused on looking at standards, assessment and instruction, and putting those all together and monitoring those firsthand. It's a real strength of hers. When it comes to the work that Mr. Irvin, Dr. Irvin is doing at Adams Elementary School, he's got a lot of work in regards to mathematics going on with fact fluency for students. He and his team, I've seen it firsthand, are doing a lot of work with the smarter balanced interim assessment blocks, which are small little blocks of assessment focused on specific standards and the teachers analyzing those, understanding which students have mastered the particular standard, which students need additional support and providing that additional support. And then also with Newport Heights, they've got a structure called Win Time, which is short for what I need. And that, again, is focused on everything from intervention all the way up to acceleration for students that are meeting the standards.
And like Dr. Sir said, you're hearing a lot about Ray tonight. You're going to hear a lot about Estancia tonight as well. We're very proud to say that Estancia grew 11% in the last three years in mathematics, one of the most difficult areas to grow in. And we've seen a lot of effort placed at Estancia on that cycle of effective instruction, the importance of taking a look at curriculum assessment and student placement and evaluation. And Estancia has done some great work with their math program. We started a pre-teach for Algebra I two years ago. We're seeing the benefits of that. So students who start in ninth grade can take a pre-teach or a reteach course in case they're not understanding or meeting the standard. We also instituted a newcomer Algebra I class as well, helping our students new to the country be successful in mathematics. And we are seeing tremendous gains from that. And then very exciting, anytime you see a school who grows multiple years in both areas, it is time to celebrate because we will have times where a school will grow in one area or not. But we are very pleased and proud to be able to share that these three schools had growth in both areas over the last three years. You may remember that we were standing in front of you last year and Estancia received the California Distinguished School. They received that last year because they received growth at that time, three years in a row for the underserved populations at Estancia, and they continue to grow again this year. So we're very pleased to be able to see, to experience and see the fruits of their labor show up in our test scores.
When it comes to the work that Ray and Newport Heights is doing, there's so much that we could say in regards to the technical work that they're doing to help support students. But when speaking with both Dr. Hogard and Principal Clark at Newport Heights, it's clear that some, a huge focus for both schools is building strong relationships with students. And they both credit their classified staff, their certificated staff and everybody pulling together and realizing that the more we can connect with students, the better the relationships we can build, the stronger academic achievement is going to move forward. So that's a theme that I would say applies to both the work that is happening at Newport Heights, the work that's happening at Ray and the work that we want to continue for all of our students and all of our schools in the district. Moving on, what you'll see here is growth from the 23 testing year, which is 2022 to 2023, to the 2324 year. And collectively, Newport Mesa and the area of English Language Arts has grown at, 50% of the schools have made growth. 10 out of our 21 elementary schools have made growth. And then at the secondary level, 57% of our student, of our schools have made growth. And that's four out of the seven schools in English Language Arts have made growth over the last two years.
And a big shout out to Newport Harbor High School for, as you can see that, that is double-digit gains, 15% in one year. And we're very pleased to be able to share that with our board this evening. And T. Winkle showing great promise at 8%. Costa Mesa is up. And so we're making progress. And that's what we really want to ensure you take away tonight, is that we're not only here we are, this is our status, but that we're making progress, incremental growth. And this one is in mathematics. And so you'll see we have, again, some really great gains here. And so you'll see that you're seeing Adams again at 9%. Davis creeping up there. You've got Kaiser Coast. We have some amazing scores there with 33% of our elementary making incremental growth and 42% of our secondary. And I would love to be able to brag again and say that Newport Harbor, double-digit gains, 10%. Estancia at 4% and T. Winkle at 1%. Very pleased to see their academic programs thriving in the area of mathematics. It's been a tremendous focus for us as we prepare students for college and career. Math is exceptionally critical subject and our schools have really been focusing on ensuring that we are creating a tighter alignment and that our PLTs and focus in our math departments are a priority.
And a couple of bright spots you'll see up here, certainly, I've touched on it a little bit, but the work that is happening at Adams School in regards to the assessment models and the teachers analyzing the standards progression the students are making and going back and reteaching is something that is, we've been highlighting in our elementary principals meetings. We're showcasing the good work that is happening assessment wise at Adams and we want that to continue. So that's outstanding growth. It's good to see Ray again, 4%. Newport L, 8% growth. Newport Coast, 4%. So we have some models that are working for us. One thing that I'll say in regards to mathematics, we're excited about having a new adoption, illustrative mathematics, and that's going to serve us well because we've got a great professional development program to support all of our teachers with these new materials. And it's really helping bring together a lot of different components for us to have core curriculum coupled with pacing, everyone teaching in particular similar ways, similar standards and teachers working together, which we'll touch on in just a little bit.
And you may have seen this image around campus. It's a beautiful new image that we created to be able to demonstrate that we are really trying to cultivate spaces for students to learn where all students are all our students. We care deeply about ensuring that every student's needs are met in every space within our district. And you even heard and felt that tonight as we had student voice in the room, which is always so powerful. We want to ensure that all students are cared for, all students are seen, heard, supported and safe. You've heard our superintendent say that multiple times, that that is a priority for this board and on the work that we do. And so as we go on this journey through this next academic year, you're going to hear us talk a lot about how we are cultivating and creating learning environments that will support all of our students. That's going to take a little work on our part to ensure that we provide the resources and professional development and spaces for teachers and all of our staff to learn. But we want to ensure that all students feel connected to that learning space and that we ensure that we, as a organization, provide that and that we place the highest priority on all of our kids being all of our kids.
So we have been working on putting together some collective beliefs. You'll see a number of different areas up here, including what our beliefs are regarding belonging, high-quality instruction, core curriculum, positive behavior and collaboration. Just reiterating what Ms. Torres said in regards to belong. And we know that when students are seen, heard, supported and safe, they connect to school. And when they connect to school, they find things that are motivating to them and they perform at higher levels. So that's definitely something that is the the main why in regards to what we're trying to accomplish at our schools. So we have a strong belief that the more we can connect with our students, the better they're going to perform. We have a lot of focus that is being placed on high-quality instruction, really taking a look at that tier one instruction. The teacher is one of the most critical aspects when it comes to improving student achievement. We have amazing teachers in our school district and supporting them with core instruction, with tier one instruction, first best instruction. We know is a major area that we need to continue to do a lot of work on with professional development and with the work that we're doing with our principals, who are instructional leaders on campuses. In regards to core curriculum, I touched on it just a little bit ago. But it's really nice to be able to have a new set of mathematics materials, a common set of English Language Arts materials, a new set of science materials. And then something we're really proud of, and I give a lot of credit to Dr. Hernandez, is really supporting our students TK through second grade in regards to what we're doing with the reading foundational skills by having a strong set of materials with Hegarty to focus on phonemic awareness and phonics and fluency. That's excellent work that's happening. And it makes it so everybody can work on the same set of materials, receive the same types of instructions and create models of support for our students. And there's a lot of work that's happening. Sometimes students get it quickly, but at those younger ages, we know a lot of what's happening is developmental, so it's not all students learn at the exact same time. So we have models of supporting students when they have mastered something. And we have models of supporting students when they need additional intervention. So that's a lot of technical work when it comes to doing reading foundational skills work. We're super excited, especially about the work that we're doing with our letters training because that is based on the science of reading and it's very strong in regards to helping to create teachers that have a very strong understanding of what is happening in regards to teaching students to learn how to read. When it comes to positive behavior, we know that student safety is one of the most critical factors. Before we even start with instruction, I want to credit Sarah Coley, who is our administrative director of Student Services. She's doing a lot of excellent work with her team in regards to PBIS. We have a lot of schools that are shooting for platinum level with PBIS. And again, that physical safety and a strong learning environment where students can come and connect, that's a critical and one of the most important things we can do. And then I'll touch on this following this slide, but we know that teacher, collective teacher efficacy and But we know that teacher, collective teacher efficacy and collaboration is one of the very strongest things that we can possibly do in this district. And I'd like to highlight some of the reasons as to why that particular core belief of collaboration is such a critical aspect to the work that we're doing in Newport Mesa. Now, if you look up here, this is a model that John Hattie has created. John Hattie has created the most comprehensive set of educational research in basically all of the world. He is an incredible educator. And if you look at this, a lot of what schools do has an effect. Sometimes it has a reverse effect. Sometimes it has a low effect, a medium effect, or a high effect. But the hinge point, the part where you're really trying to get at or above, is .4. So if you look at that scale, right at .4 is where the desired effects begin. Collective teacher efficacy. One of the things that we know is that, over the years, John Hattie's work continues to look at different influences. This is actually called his barometer of influences. And out of the 300, and currently, it used to be 150 in his first book in 2008, but he's now analyzing 357 influences of what schools can do to help improve academic achievement. This scale right here demonstrates that collective teacher efficacy, teachers working with teachers, believing that they are stronger by collaborating than working alone, has such a huge predictor. It is number one out of the 357 effects that he has studied. This is the right work to do. So we have been working collectively with our principals. Principals have been working with the teachers. Last year, we got commitments from all of our teachers to say, "We're going to move forward with purposeful learning teams." And that is a commitment at the elementary level where we, two times per month, are having our teachers take a look at assessment in the area of mathematics, collaborate around a similar protocol, and go back and analyze it and reteach for those students that haven't yet mastered particular standards that we're focused on. That is going to be a constant cycle of teachers working collaboratively. Every principals' meeting that we have, that's the work that we're doing in regards to bringing them together, helping them understand what a purposeful learning team does, and continuing to focus on collective teacher efficacy. It's a very, very powerful thing to do. It's the most powerful thing to do. And we're just getting started, and we have a long ways to go with it. But we're completely committed to doing this right work. So again, the power of collective voices and people working together is what this is all about. We have a lot of work to still do, and we're happy to answer any questions you might have. All right, thank you.
I see two lights. Trustee, one again, and then trustee Pearson in that order.
Thank you. So some of these schools have really positive effects on some of the initiatives that they are putting in place that you highlighted. What are the goals? Or I guess, are we taking, like, for instance, Newport Heights Walk to Learn Program? Are we going to take that secret sauce and spread that around to the rest of the district?
Absolutely. So one of the things that we've started this year is in our principals' meetings, we are highlighting the principals presenting to principals. It's one thing for directors or assistant superintendents to talk to principals about what's happening. But when they hear from their peers, the powerful work that our principals are doing, it takes on a whole different tone in regards to the meetings. And it really creates opportunity for principals to connect with one another and steal great ideas in regards to things that are working for our schools. So that's something that we're putting a lot of time and attention to with all of our elementary principals' meetings, is having them highlight particular practices that they're feeling really great about, that we want to share with other principals.
Will there be any kind of, oh, sorry, you go ahead. Oh, no, go ahead. I said, will there be any, like, I guess, systems approach then to that? Where, you know, we see, hey, that Ray has Avid, for instance, and it's been immensely successful there. Is that something that we would say put through the rest of our elementary schools? Or what does that look like in a system-wide approach to have those kinds of programs?
Yeah, I think all of that is a potential option for us to look at as schools continue to grow and share ideas. I mean, we have some extraordinary principals. And principals sharing with principals the work that they're doing creates an energy in and of itself. So I think everything is on the table in regards to options for our schools to be able to add things and do new things and move forward. So again, I'd say we're in the infancy stage in regards to truly lifting up the very best ideas out there. And it's infinite in regards to where schools can go to try to really push on academic achievement.
And I would say that our focus as an executive cabinet is 100% finding assistance-wide approach to improve student achievement. And our secondary principals, we function as our own PLT. So we actually have our principal meetings co-led by principals. They're co-planned by principals. And part of our work is sharing best practices. And we will have, we have a meeting, actually, this week, our first principals' meeting we had of the year. That's exactly what we started to talk about. Well, what are some of those ones, successes that our principals who had growth? What did they do and how did they get it? And they've all shared out. And that's where we need to go, is we need to make sure that this new process allows us to steal best practices from each other. But we will do that with a very purposeful intent.
Thank you. With the two of you leading us, we are in very good shape. I know something similar went out to our constituents through email, I think. And I did get a couple of questions from my constituents. I mean, our elementary schools in Newport Beach did phenomenal in their scores. Anderson, Harborview, Newport Coast, Lincoln. And some of the, they want to know why they're not part of the bright spots, like, why they weren't mentioned. Can you explain to them why we're not focused, why they aren't part of the bright spots, I guess?
Yes, we had particular, there's so many ways for us to analyze data. We had particular criteria that we were looking at over three years, over two years, looking at growth. But when you look at every school, we really can find bright spots. But again, with our limited time and our focus, that we were looking at very specific criteria. But by all means, we have bright spots in every single one of our schools that we can celebrate.
Anything else?
Thank you so much. This is very encouraging in a lot of ways. And it's great to see so much improvement. One thing that I've watched that's just been great is we now have curricular coherence across the district. That's wonderful. We have a lot of systems in place. But kind of two questions. One, how do we make sure, as we look at our systems and our things that are inspiring, we don't kind of end up, what are our guardrails to make sure we don't end up back where we were, where we did have so many different pilots as we kind of tried to figure out the things that were working at some schools and try those at others?
Yeah, so when it comes to trying to have consistency, what we're trying to accomplish here is every time we're getting together, whether it's principals' meeting with teachers or district folks' meeting with principals at principals' meeting, is really utilizing sets of data to determine, are we making growth? Are we not? When it comes to the work that we're doing with purposeful learning teams, for example, when you have eight grade levels on your campus and you're trying to monitor those teams because the teams are the ones that are working collaboratively. So that's really where the meat is in this work as far as collective teacher efficacy. When you have your kinder team working in one spot, first grade working in another spot. Sometimes they pull all of them into the multipurpose room, but sometimes they're in different places. But a part of the monitoring, because I think a part of the answer to your question is how do we monitor and make sure that the things that we're doing are actually happening, is we're using a process for all of the teams to take notes in regards to what particular assessments are you analyzing, going through the protocol and looking at which students are meeting particular standards, which students need additional support. But what can happen is the principal can go back and can look at all of the notes from every single grade-level team, reflect on that, and come back and talk to us and share that in principal meetings. So we have that monitoring. And then also, another piece that I think is helping to bring together the monitoring aspect of working with a coherent set of curricular materials is we just had our principals' meeting last week, and we did an analysis of look-for. So we have the Hegarty program for reading foundational skills. We have illustrative mathematics for math. We have wonders for ELA. And we did a demonstration. And Dr. Hernandez did a wonderful job in regards to showing videos of what a principal should be looking for to identify that indeed, a teacher is teaching particular sets of materials that are part of our core curriculum. Because now, again, now that we do have common sets of materials, we don't want to move away from not using those. So we have to support that. So by having videos, by having discussions, and helping principals understand that when you go into a classroom, these are very concrete things to be looking for, to talk to teachers about, it really helps with us having that coherence and not moving away from it. I hope I'm answering your question.
Yeah, that's exactly, that's great, that's very helpful. And then the second question, and it is for Carrie because it's a secondary question. Junior high, I feel like it's always a challenge. It's only two years in some of our school sites. And it's maybe a little bit easier when it's a six-year time for our students, but especially for our standalone middle schools. What kinds of programs, projects do we have planned for those? Because I feel like those ones, too often, it's, I think it's just a challenging place to have only two grades at one school site and only see these kids for two years. But they frequently kind of, I think, experience the least amount of growth, probably because it's just less often. But I think a lot of times, for kids at those sites, it's harder for them to visualize that connection to school and that vision for the future because they don't see the high school kids walking around doing choir and things like that. And they know that they can do that someday. So what's our plan to kind of engage our standalone middle schools and increase growth, I guess, in our middle schools in general?
Sure, so you're absolutely right. Two-year programs are challenging. And so one of the things we've really been trying to focus on is articulation. And one of the gifts we've been given this year that you've heard tonight is the fact that we now have a K-12 adoption in math. So for the first time in maybe our history, we actually have the same content that we'll be teaching. And so that's really going to help the articulation process. And so what that means is we'll be bringing in teams of teachers to be able to collaborate from elementary to middle, middle to high school. So knowing that math is one of our really intense areas of focus, that's something we're really trying to ensure that we do this year. Our partner who isn't here with us tonight would kill us if we didn't mention, as part of this, you know, systems approach and staying on the rails and not going off the guardrails, would be that this year we're bringing in groups of teachers and leaders to come in and have discussions around the data. So we have planned for us dine with data, very fancy. We'll be dining with data. We'll be talking about our test scores. And we're going to be tapping into the brains of teachers and leaders who are coming to the table to talk to us about what those bright spots were and how they're going to achieve. We'll be able to have those articulation conversations in the same space. Because then we're also going to have the Student Achievement Leadership Think Tank, hashtag salt. I think I got that right.
You did.
And so we have all these acronyms. And that's going to be teachers that principals have been asked to say, "Send us your best and brightest," who want to come, who want to have dialogue, who want to talk about what the wins and the challenges are, and they want to create solutions, forward-thinking for student achievement. And so those are coming in the month of October, December. And so those will be coming soon. So those are some of the systems pieces we're putting into place to be able to bring people together in the same space. And we talk about the same things.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's very encouraging to hear. And I'm also very excited about our math continuum. I am also thankful to hear that the Wednesdays are much more purposeful now. I think at times, people weren't sure what was happening on campuses. And so I think having this information kind of go out per school will be really helpful. A, for parents to know just exactly how well that time is being used. But then also, too, just kind of, I would love to see, similarly, how we have here, you know, like, what some of the year-to-date, like, numbers are over three years. I think it would be great to have those by campus because I think one of the things, we've been doing a great job bringing in and communicating with teachers around some of these. But I think the next step is including parents in that, particularly for our schools where parents haven't necessarily known what their role is in explicit ways. It was really great. I think a lot of us were at the Ray Avid Literacy Night, and it was packed out, their NPR was packed out. No one wanted to leave. It was really incredible to see students working with their parents to learn different literacy techniques. And I know I hear from different parents that they're not sure what they should be helping their student with. And I know in the past, we really want the first-best instruction. But we also, for me, I think it's really important that we bring in parents, particularly around math, because it's very different than how they were trained. I know we've talked about that a lot. And then, just the third thing. You know, I love an infographic or a chart. This, the collective beliefs piece, it would be amazing if we did this for LCAP, something similar to that. So each of the four LCAP items has a really clear picture. We could have 1, 2, 3, 4. We could have the back page could have them color-coded and could have the costs. So we're allocating how much and what to cost on a one-page sheet. Because again, I think we really need to be communicating more clearly with our community about what our goals are so they can get on board as well. Thank you.
We will make sure that our LCAP queen knows about that. I don't think she's in the room tonight because it's her birthday. So we'll make sure that we give her the night off to be able to ensure that we take that information back. So thank you.
Thomas Galey, happy birthday.
So I have a question. So overall, the district, we had a 47% improvement out of elementary schools and then a 57% improvement from our secondary. So how is that going to reflect moving forward and having a goal to increase that? Because I think Newport Mesa can do better. Are you having those one-on-one conversations with sites that needed? Because I know you have principal meetings and everything, but are you actually very intentionally sitting down and actually, you know, going through their numbers? And because every site probably has a different need to improve. And so are you having those conversations? And if you can just give us a little window to that so that we can understand how progress is going to happen and we can break, we need to definitely improve those.
Thank you for pointing that out. We have made progress, but we're not nearly where we are at perfection, right? So we're continuing to make progress towards growth. It is a target for all of our principals. We will meet with principals and talk with them about what percentages are realistic for them in terms of trying to set a goal for themselves. This data just came out last week. It was official, I believe, on Thursday. And so principals' meetings are ensuing. We have one secondary meeting this Friday. So that will be definitely something that we can share. They are purposeful conversations. I know one of our principals, for example, secondary schools last year and the year before, it was kind of conversation, but we really lit some fires. And lo and behold, one of our schools has a 10% and an 18% growth. And so I won't, he will remain nameless. But, you know, so sometimes we do have those one-on-one conversations. And then when we have high-performing schools like CDM, who kind of ebb and flow and ebbs and flows because when you're high, it's, you know, you're kind of bouncing around all the time. So those are conversations we have that we want to look and see what's attainable. Can you grow 2%, 3%, 4%? I mean, the 8s and 11s, that's fantastic. But we want realistic growth and progress over time. That's really what we're looking for.
Okay. And just for the record, trustee, you mentioned Avid. And I just love the Avid idea. And I know that it would be something that I could put myself behind because I do believe that it does make a difference.
Thank you.
All right, let's move on. We will move on to the consent calendar. Would I, anyone would like to make a motion? That was Pearson. Pearson, make the motion. And who seconded it?
Second.
Second, all right. And second was Murphy, trustee Murphy. And trustee Anderson, I know you want to make a comment.
Yes, thank you. I'm just on item B-12, the School Mint contract.
Okay, hold on. B-12? B-12? Okay, approve the agreement between Michael Kim Marshall, Educational Consultant, and Newport Mesa Unified, that one?
No, B-12, School Mint Inc., for a three-year contract. It's, it looks like it's a three-year contract, and it is the provider that we're currently using for our parent-school choice transfers, our dual immersion program, our continued enrollment transfers. our continued enrollment transfers, and our Davis Magnet applications. And it's currently, it looks like it's about $60,000 a year and the contract's for $187,000. One of the pieces to that is that they run reports. And I know I have asked in the past, but it was, I was reminded when I saw this. I would love to see before we start afresh with this in January 2025, some data around which schools, what, what, some of the information. So like, is this, are we having 300 parent school choice transfers? Are we having 600 applications for Davis? Which schools are they coming from? Is it relevant for us to continue having a magnet school? Or is that something that maybe we need to rethink? Just having some data, I think, would be really helpful going forward.
Okay.
Thank you.
We'd be happy to run Data School Mint's a very powerful software tool. Prior to using that, we had a internal program that was written. So it's wonderful to have School Mint as a tool. And we can put together any set of data in regards to parent choice transfers that you would like to see. We're happy to do that.
Great, thank you. You know how much we love data. All right, so roll call, please.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Ersoilu?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
All right, the vote is unanimous. We now move on. We're skipping discussion action since there are no items. And we move on to. And we move on to item 20, which is the public hearing and report. 20A, public hearing. Compliance with requirements of Ed Code Sections 6119 and 6422B. Sufficiency of textbooks or instructional materials that are consistent with the content and cycles of the curriculum framework for 2024, 2025 Williams Settlement Legislation. Ms. Torres?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
It's all right.
Sorry, sorry, sorry.
It's 20A. Sorry about that.
Yeah, I've got, I've got Williams. So.
Okay.
Yeah, this is a routine operational item. And it demonstrates that we have sufficient instructional materials in all of our schools. We've gone through and we've verified both with, at the elementary level with our LMTs, our library media texts, and all of the teachers signing off that we have sufficient materials. And also at the secondary level, we have department chairs and librarians and administrators who have all worked collaboratively to demonstrate that we have sufficient materials in all of our mesh areas. Math, English, English language development, science, social studies, and history.
All right, thank you. The hearing is now, now open at 7:52. Are there any public comments? Seeing as there are none, the hearing is closed. It's 7:52. And now we move on to item 21A, which is to adopt the resolution number 51024 in compliance with the requirements of Ed Code Sections 6119 and 6422B. Sufficiency of textbooks and instructional materials. And is this sir or Torres?
Again, this is just a confirmation that we have done the work in regards to demonstrating that there are sufficient instructional materials in all of our classrooms throughout Newport Mesa.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Trustee Anderson, in a second?
I'll second.
Trustee Barto seconds the motion. Roll call, please.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Ersoilu?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
All right, unanimous. We move on to 21B. Adopt Resolution Number 31024 to approve continued funding application with the California Department of Education for the state preschool program for the 2025, 2026 school year. Doctor, sir.
Yes, this is a confirmation that we have a large number, a large amount of funding that has come in, over $5 million for next school year. And this is a confirmation for all of our state preschool funding, both the half-day and the full-day program. So this gives us the ability for both the superintendent and the assistant superintendent to be able to sign to receive the funding. And again, this is for next year's funding.
All right, thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Trustee Anderson, in a second?
Second.
Trustee Murphy, roll call vote, please.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
Yes.
Trustee Ersoilu?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
All right, motion passes unanimously. I'll take the $5 million, too. That's nice. 21C. Adopt Resolution 41024. Selection of Farmers and Merchants Bank as depository for various accounts of district and authorizations therewith. Mr. Trader?
District has a number of accounts at Farmers and Merchants Bank. And on occasion, we have to change out signatories. And so this is an update of the signatories for the accounts.
Thank you. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Trustee Wigan, in a second?
Second.
Thank you, trustee Ersoilu. And roll call, please.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
No, yes, sorry.
Trustee Ersoilu? Trustee Barto?
Yes.
Trustee Murphy?
You just didn't want it to be my signature, did you? Yes, of course.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
All right, the motion passes. Thank you. Next is 21D. Adopt Resolution 61024. Proposition 2. Kindergarten through grade 12 schools and local community college public education facilities modernization, repair, and safety bond act of 2024. Mr. Trader?
Proposition 2 authorizes $10 billion in state general obligation bonds for facilities for schools. And currently, the district has 7.4 million in eligibility. So if this were to pass, the district would stand to get 7.4 million right off the bat. It's a resolution just indicating favorability for that.
Okay, thank you. Do I have a motion to?
So moved, approved.
Trustee Murphy, and a second by trustee Ersoilu. Do we have any discussion? Trustee Barto, and then trustee Wigan?
Just, I appreciate the, and the work that CSBA has done regarding this. For our district, I don't feel that for $7 million, which ultimately would then cost taxpayers $14 million over the 30 years, plus with the required match. So ultimately, you're talking at $7 million. It actually costs our district $21 million total. The math doesn't add up for me for our district. I know for some smaller districts and for some ones that have that lack of funding, their funding structure might make this an attractive proposition. But I don't feel that this best supports our district.
Okay. Trustee Wigan?
Yeah, I would say, you know, this is a $10 billion proposition where the potential for us to only get seven, and then we'd have to match that with an additional seven from our district. Yet we're going to be paying more on top of that debt than we're actually probably would receive from our own area. So to me, it's a well-thought-out, you know, as well-intended, I should say, to provide, you know, money for our schools and that. But if, if the, I think if the government really wanted to do something for our schools, they would put it in the budget and not have it voted on. So with that, I, I don't think that, you know, it, it's going to just cost too much over the time for what we're actually going to get out of it with Prop 2.
Okay, trustee Anderson?
Thank you. Yes, I think this is an important resolution, not only for Newport Mesa, but for districts across the state. I think Newport Mesa is unique in that we get a lot of our money from local property tax. But also because of that, we need to be very thoughtful with our fiduciary responsibility and how much we do take from taxpayer money. I'm thankful that the state is, or that there is an option for us to get some state money. I know when we've done some legislating, we've been asking for federal infrastructure dollars. And unfortunately, at the state and the federal level, school, buildings, and infrastructure are not funded at the level that they should be. I, I do want to point out, too, that it's just an interesting piece because there is one of our local political parties that specifically ask people to not vote on bonds. And for me, for us, I don't think that is appropriate, particularly because we are a basic aid district. We are funded by property tax. Other districts are not in the same case. So I think it's even more important for us to approve bonds. And so, yes, I just, one size does not fit all. That's why we have local control. And so I'm glad that we have the option to adopt this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Ersoilu?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Trader, for doing all the research and finding out the exact amounts and about the match. And given the importance of safety and repairs and modernization. And we all know how expensive those sunshades are that are going up all around the district, that are making families very happy and protecting our kids from the sun. So, I mean, it's kind of a no-brainer for me that if there is an opportunity to get a state bond that will match, be matched with what we have on hand, it makes sense for us to get what we can get. So thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Trader, can you, can you speak to the seven becoming 14 and 21?
The district has done work on our, on our facilities. And as we do that work, we apply for state funding. And so at this time, we have 7.4 million dollars that the state will reimburse us if we can get some, if this bond passes. Because right now, there's, there's no funding really available at the state level. And so if the bond were to pass, we'd get 7.4 million right off the bat. And then, of course, if, according to availability and work that we would do, there could be more that could come with the match.
Well, I'm trying to understand what trustee Barto said. Because she said that would cost us not, not seven, but 21, right? Trustee Barto, you want to clarify?
Sure. So if you look at the interest rate at over 30 years.
Oh, is that, okay.
So then if you say, and let's just do it at the state level because the math carries just the same. But if you look at $10 billion, then over 30 years, that costs the taxpayers $18 billion or so. And then if you look at the match requirement, we are putting in $7 million of our own money to get an additional $7 billion of money, which, again, over the 30 years, would cost about double. So, you know, maybe 20, 19 million, something around there. But ultimately, we're still, all of that money still comes from our property taxes and our taxpayer base. So that's, that's my math.
Mr. Trader, does that make sense?
That's correct.
Okay, all right. Well, I do know that we did an exhaustive audit of our facilities and came up with a tag of, a price tag of $2.4 billion. And so I'm not sure as, as governing board members, how we're going to pay for that. And I know that safety is a priority. And I know that part of this facilities bond is very much about safety. And so this is not a vote for the bond. It's a vote to, it's a vote that we are putting behind, we're just putting ourselves behind CSBA, which is recommending this, this proposition. And so if we want to try to achieve our goal, and we can't really do it ourselves as a district because we can't really raise that money, I don't see why we would want, want the help of the state in achieving our goal to make our schools safe. All right, so any other discussion?
Just one more question. So, so the $7 million that the state would, would immediately give us, right? It's not, that would be bond, that, those bonds would be paid back by the entire state taxpayer base.
Correct.
So it's not, it's not $7 billion or $7 million of taxes going directly to Newport Mesa taxpayers. I mean, it's not, it, like, the, for all of the $10 billion in bonds, that's going to be paid back by the entire state.
Correct.
So it's not like we will be specifically charged for the $7 million.
No, no, we, yeah, we would receive 7.4 million, which is what we have, I say, in the, in the works right now in the pipeline. They, the state has said, has approved all of that. And we're just waiting for the, the funding. And so that funding would be made available by this bond.
But it's not like we would get an additional tax on our property taxes for that $7 million for the people living in Newport Mesa.
No, no, no. That's correct.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so let's go ahead and call for the question. Roll call vote, please.
Trustee Crane?
Yes.
Trustee Wigan?
No.
Trustee Ersoilu?
Yes.
Trustee Barto?
No.
Trustee Murphy?
Yes.
Trustee Pearson?
Yes.
Trustee Anderson?
Yes.
All right, the motion carries five to two. Thank you. And now we move on to informal reports. Superintendent?
It was mentioned earlier by one of our students. And he was great, by the way, speaking at the event. State of the Schools, really want to thank staff and our amazing students, the orchestists, the magical choir, the, you know, ASB presidents and their ASBs serving food. And people like the food better this year. I'm sure it's because our kids are so awesome. And then the staff that had to put all this together, classified, certificate alike, that launched that to Dr. Haley and his whole team. I mean, they, it's, it's, it's Battle of the Bay. And they have to remove all of their spirit signs because we didn't want to be biased in the room. And so, full of signs they had to take down and then put back up after our event. I mean, it's a silly example, but it shows how much work goes into pulling that off. And so to all of our teammates and audio and visual. And, you know, big, big shout out to our comms team and all the work they put into producing the videos, the last video. I hope people, if, if nothing else, watch the students, skip the short guy, watch the video at the very end of students and how they define unified and what it means to them. And so, comms, thank you for that. We had a retiree recognition recently. And I'm always moved by the, the types of stories that we hear, the descriptions we hear read about them. 63 retirees this year, almost 1,600 years of service. That is powerful. And then, this was cute. One of the retirees had another retiree as her student. Now, she pointed out that she started teaching very, very, very young. But I thought it was cool that, that in, you know, this recognition, that's the kind of community we build here, where we come back and we serve future generations. I also want to thank all the people in the community that just continue to support our, our schools, our, our PTAs. And we saw our Girl Scouts tonight. We have foundations that, that do all kinds of fundraising. And even our foundation that does teacher grants. And they were working hard at the State of the Schools as well. I got to attend a Newport Harbor donor event. And I saw these folks that got celebrated for silent giving. They don't get celebrated anywhere else. I guess that's the rule. They only get, you know, an applause at this event and then no other recognition. They just want to make sure that the school has what it needs. And we have a lot of groups like that, but I certainly appreciate being with them. And then someone pointed out to me that as I was mentioning scholarships and, you know, the 2.4 million that we got last year and some of the groups that, that provided them, that I forgot one of our local groups. And so I certainly want to thank SOI. I went to a Back to SOI event with many of you recently. And they certainly provide a service every day after school for our students and then even beyond. But they also give scholarships. And I think they gave over 200,000 of the 2.4 million last year. And overall, $4.6 million they've given in scholarships to our students. And I was remiss for not mentioning them. So I wanted to thank them and all the others that are so generous with their time, efforts, energies, and dollars here in the district. So thank you for supporting our students.
Thank you, Dr. Smith. All right, so trustees, time for your reports. Let's go alphabetical. So that goes with Barto. Oh, no, actually, Anderson. Anderson, Anderson, and then Barto.
I'm sure. I am really thankful for the city partnerships for Walk to School Day. I think this was the most well-publicized and well-attended that we have had to date. And so that was really exciting to see. And I think the continued action with our city partners continuing with our bike, bike to school safety as well has been really important. As I mentioned, the Ray Avid Literacy Night was amazing. And I'm excited to hear and learn more about some of the other schools. more about some of the other schools that will be adding Avid programs soon. I'm hoping we can announce some of that and, and flush that out a bit so people learn more about that. And I was able to attend recently a Victoria PTA meeting, which was so fascinating, because there were people that I had known in there since kindergarten. And there's a dads group that has started a running group, and so, and then there's also a running group that is starting at Wilson. And so there will probably be more people joining the Spirit Run this year, but also just really exciting to see some, some dads wake up at 6:00 AM to run with children at 7:00 AM. And I'm just excited to see the continued growth with a lot of the community and family engagement at Wilson, Pomona and Whittier. It's, every single time I'm on those campuses, there's parents everywhere, which is a really big difference from how it was a few years ago. So it's just been great to have exceptional principals at all of those and then the new community partnerships. So thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Barto?
I was excited to attend Battle of the Bay and was on the Newport side, but also went to the CDM side in a sense of fairness. Everyone did really well in the school spirit. I was talking about it with some parents, just how amazing the school spirit was in that whole stadium, just everyone was so excited. And it was really cool to watch how, you know, this is like multi-generational attended event, and that's really special. They sold out of tickets, I think, on the Tuesday before, which I don't, does not happen for high school games. So that was amazing. And then went to State of Schools, and it's always great to hear from our students and our teachers and our staff, and just, I think everyone is, has told me wonderful things about the level of, I don't know, enthusiasm. And then one last thing, I got to sit with some gate parents from a few of our different schools, and I just wanted to pass on to the district the compliment that they gave me, the gate parents, because they felt like just the work that's been going in for their students has really made a big impact. And they were folks who had previously left Newport Mesa and then were giving Newport Mesa a second chance, and were so grateful for the level of education that they had provided for their students.
Trustee Ersoilu?
A C not before E?
Is there a C?
You.
Yeah, I, I go last, because I, I'm pres.
Got it, okay.
I'm P.
Got it, okay. I was just thinking, wow, it's really late. I really missed the boat.
Yes, I just want to highlight all the, the great parents. Parental involvement is alive and well in Newport Mesa. I've been to countless PTA meetings this month, and there are just parents flooding these PTA meetings at rates that I didn't see when my daughter was at California Elementary. So it's really great to see them everywhere. Got to check out the two new play structures and sunshades. Thank you, Jeff Trader and your team. The sunshades are magical at California and Kilbrook. The parents are so thankful for them. The kids are loving the playground equipment, but I'm loving that they're not eating in the direct sun. So that, that was exciting. And I'm thinking that is, that is all?
Yes.
Next, we have Murphy?
Yes.
And then Pearson, and then Wigan, and then Crane.
I could start singing the alphabet if you want. So I think all the events that I've attended have been mentioned, so I won't mention those again. But just a thanks to everyone who worked on renaming the Costa Mesa Middle and High School Theater to the Gilbo and Lynn Forest Performing Arts Center. So thank you, everybody, for voting for that and approving that and all of your hard work on that. That is going to mean a lot to our Costa Mesa community. And, and we got it done, Jeff, in time before a performance at the theater. So that is going to be such a great event when we have that, that opening show. I was able to go to the dance show there and, and the black box show from the drama class. And our kids are so talented and so amazing, and both shows were so great. So I'm excited to celebrate all of the hard work that our teachers have clearly put into making our students and their programs so great. So thank you, everybody. Come to the theater, renaming, opening, whenever it's announced.
Do you have a plaque, ready?
No, we'll have to get a plaque.
Takes a while to get the plaque. Just so you know. Yeah, thank you to our, to the Newport Mesa School Foundation for putting on the Back to School, for putting on the State of the School Breakfast. Thanks to Dr. Smith for, for a wonderful presentation on the vision of our district. It was fabulous. You had everybody in awe. I also went to Back to SOI Night. It was heartwarming to see how this center empowered our children, how it made them feel welcome. And then also, like you said, the fact that they're helping our kids get into college, they're giving them scholarships. Couldn't be more thankful for such an amazing spot for our kids to be able to go. I got to sit on, sit in on a mayor's youth council, never got to do it when my kids were part of it. So it was great to see how our local high school kids were able to, to listen to our city leaders. Thank you to them, our mayor, Will O'Neill, who spends the time with them, and he just has them all captivated. And our police, our fire department, they're all there. A lot of our city leaders are there mentoring these kids, and it's a whole year program. It's a, it's a wonderful program. The Battle of the Bay, I'm, I'm with Gann, and it was, I mean, I went home and told my family, it was better than an SC UCLA game, especially this year. It was, is, is.
Most things are.
Definitely to see, like Michelle said, to see those, the tradition live on and how deep rooted that tradition is. It just, it's a high for the whole year, showing up, up at that game. Walk to School Days, like you said, it's so great to see our police. And I think there were more police than there were kids walking to school at some of my schools, but to see them lifting up the kiddos and putting them on their, on the motorcycles, it was just wonderful. It's wonderful to see, it's wonderful to see our kids to get used, used to the police officers and feel safe with them. And thank you to the team for okaying the Anderson money. I want to say thank you to all of you. You know I've been, every day I'm in there fighting for Anderson, so thank you for doing that. I know we all put safety and education for our kiddos first, so thank you.
All right, the Battle of the Bay, yes, that was an amazing game to watch, but also just an amazing event for our community. Because if you think about the legacy of, and the tradition of both of those schools playing again for, what was it, the 60th or so time? But you've got the coach of Harbor's football team that had went to Harbor and won a championship there, but also then the quarterback of the football team, whose dad also went to Harbor, and now he's the quarterback. And to see then the principal and his son on, on the team. So it's just a community that is just so deep rooted, and it was really heartfelt to see all these kids experiencing, you know, such a core memory in their life at the Battle of the Bay game. It was very heartwarming. And then, of course, the Walk to School game, or sorry, Walk to School. That was always, it's, it's always a great time to see our kids dress up and walk to school, ride their bike, whatever they do, and see our police support. Also attended the Kaiser Woodland PFO meeting, which was great, and it was to, it was great to be able to talk about, you know, our curriculum enhancements with our illustrative math, our new science curriculum, as well as all the new safety and security measures that we have on, on campus. And, and I think the parents were, were very appreciative of everything that the district is doing. And then coming up, just one thing that's big is, in the community is Boo Fest at Mariners. The whole community can come, but it's at nighttime, and they have like carnival games, and it's basically like just an, an open-air carnival on the campus, and it's open for everyone on October 22nd.
Excellent. Battle, speaking of Battle of the Bay, now Dr. Haley has to wear a Harbor jersey all day, had a designated day, so he'd probably break up in hives, but, break out in hives, but oh, well. The cost, the cost of losing, it's never free. State of the School Breakfast, thank you so much for the Newport Mesa School Foundation in collaboration with our PIO department that worked so hard, and our comm department. I saw Bob there and Hank and just the whole team, even the, the mobile, the mobile MNO team was there. So we have deployed everyone that we could to make this an amazing event, because you know what? It's about our kids, but it's also about our, our district, and we need to show pride in our district, and we certainly brought it on, on that day, because people are watching, our business partners, our nonprofits, you know, our, our, our leaders within the town that are vested, our Chamber of Commerce. We had a senator, as someone mentioned earlier. People are watching, and we brought it and we did it, and we did a great job. So thank you for everyone who made it possible. Dr. Smith, I thought you did a wonderful job sharing the highlights of our, of our schools. Thank you very much. And seeing the ASB kids, you know, lining the periphery of our gym, really neat, because it shows, this is why we're doing it. We're doing it for our kids. Also, thank you for student services, because, because of your efforts, we are having such a nice intentional bike walk to school program. And I know I've been wanting this for a long time, and it's just so nice to see it happen and have it in such an effective way, as, as mentioned by the trustees that are on these diets tonight. Also, thank you to Harbor Council PTA for sponsoring the candidate forum. I don't know if you've heard, but there's an election, and so it was great for them to educate the public and our, and offer that. So thank you, Harbor Council PTA. I would also like to mention that we, trustee Pearson and I went to the CDM Foundation seventh grade mixer. What we do is we welcome the families of seventh graders that are coming new to our campus. Some are coming from private schools, but most are coming from our feeder schools, feeder schools. And then at the same time, there's a, a parallel event that is really fun, is the seventh graders that basically have a mixer themselves. And I wanted to join in. They had all this, these fun games and music blaring, a lot of fun being had, and I think it was very well-attended for the kids. A lot of kids were there. And Eastpuff got his playground. It's truly a Rolls Royce of playgrounds. I keep hearing that the big kids want to play on the little kids. When do you hear that, right? That's, that's a sign right there. And I am very happy that Anderson is moving on with its, with its plan. And I also was excited to hear that we're going to have a honors engineering course that we're going to approve, and that we did just approve in the consent calendar. So a lot of great stuff's happening at Newport Mesa. On that note, 8:21, meeting is adjourned. Thank you.